All right, I'm calling the meeting to order. If everybody will stand.
Let us pray. Praise has gotten me to praise you for the freedom we have to live in a country where we get to cast our ballots and elect people to serve us. And tonight we will install some of those who've been elected, and we praise you for the process. We do ask your guidance and directions on us as a council, and do lift up the work we have to do for the people of Forsyth and the surrounding areas. This night, we also think about the people in Ukraine, the disaster there and the devastation that continues on, and we pray for peace. It's in your son's name we pray, now God's people said.
Amen.
(Inaudible)
All right, the first thing on the agenda is to accept the election results from the county clerk.
I move that we accept the election results from the county clerk. Posted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, I would just like to thank the board. Kelly, it's been nice working with you over the years. Dennis, Jack, it's been very nice working with you and with Gregory, and very nice working with Chris and Angela and I. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Looks like even me.
Yes.
That's a threat.
And, you know, with the chief of police, David Forrest, and with Nathan, and with Will from the building department, and all the city employees, it's been my swag and everyone, and I appreciate that opportunity. And I want to thank all the residents for supporting me all the years that they have, and it's very kind of them, and I appreciate that. And since my husband and I, David, came here in 1988, the fall, we've seen a lot of good positive things happen in the city of Forsyth, which is good. And, you know, it takes a lot of people having, coming in and working and helping make good changes. And so, and as the years had went by, the economy had improved, and the city was able to build a treatment plan and a sewer system and a water system, which was wonderful for the residents of Forsyth. And then, of course, Forsyth is such a beautiful place to live. Where else can you find a place when you have two hours? You have lots of boundless, beautiful scenery. And in the fall, you can take rides through the country, see the changing leaves, and they've got abundant fishing. It's just a beautiful place to live, and I think Forsyth is blessed to be where that it is. And, of course, along the way, the city was able to build a new park out at Shoals Bend and to make improvements at Shadow Rock Park. I don't think there's ever going to be a park like Shadow Rock Park anywhere because of the setting and of the history that it has. And many of you know that there was a monument down there for steamboat landing, and steamboats used to navigate up the White River to Forsyth, and they couldn't go any further. And so that made Forsyth quite a unique place to be. And I think that, you know, a lot of people have worked together for a lot of years to help Forsyth be what it is, and the current finances of the city are in very good shape, and that's the result of many good people working together to make that come about. And I thank everyone for supporting me, and I've always tried to do what I'm supposed to do as an alderman, to do what I felt was in the best interest of the residents as a whole, you know, for everyone as a whole. And I wish the city much continued growth and much success, and thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Appreciate all the years that you've put in and dedicated to the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We need to swear in, and you all do. Missy Heskey could not make it this evening, so we are just, we will swear her in next evening.
Just good work in time, Justin Crowe.
(Inaudible) says all the qualifications in office are written for you to subscribe by law to support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Missouri. The provisions of the law laws of this state, the cities of this class, and ordinances of the city of Forsyth, and may I meet myself in office alone, may I?
Yes, ma'am, I do. Justin, it's a pleasure that I've welcomed you to City Council, and I appreciate your participation and want to come in here and serve the city, so.
I'm excited.
Okay, we need to appoint a president of board.
Make a motion, we appoint Dennis as the president of the board.
I'm willing.
You're willing?
I'm willing.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Justin?
Aye.
(Laughter).
You're gonna pass? Because I'm not sure this is the best decision I've ever made, but that's okay.
I think it's just an appointment.
Well, I know that the main thing is when you're gone.
Yeah. You will sit in here. Yes, you will. Yes. And the president also is, we have, each alderman has a department assignment, and if there's an issue with any department, they usually go to that, that supervisor goes to that alderman and then involves also the president. And so, you know, because we can only have, in order to not have a, you know, a meeting, we have, you know, more than two aldermen, yeah, we can't have more than two, so you will involve the, you'll be always involved with one of those, okay? All right. Hope that explains some of it.
Yeah.
But anyway, let's see, alderman department assignment, so we're going to go with seniority here. We have, we have the maintenance, and we have police department, we have the fire department, and.
Parks.
Parks. Sorry, and I always get the girls in City Hall, sorry.[532.04][532.04](Laughter). But anyway, Jack, I'll let you choose.
I select Chris from the city boys.
Okay. You have parks, fire department, or police department?
I'll do fire department.
Fire department? You have parks or police department?
Police department.
I think she will be more than happy, she loves the parks, so that will make her happy. All right, perfect. Okay, then, okay, we have an employee recognition. So, Mr. Nathan Bauer. Nathan has been with the city for 15 years. Honestly, I, I haven't met hardly anybody as dedicated as you are. You are amazing. The amount of dedication that you do to this, the city, and your actual department and your, your staff, you are just the most dedicated person I've ever seen, and always willing to step in, do things, you do the extra things for the city, like you're going to do sprinkling. Anytime you're trying to bring in more volunteers, you're always working so hard to do that, and so much of your time here, so I couldn't, I can't even begin to tell you how appreciative we are of you for your 15 years.
I want to say the hours you put in, I'm glad we don't pay you overtime.
All right, and we have one more. We have a gal that's been here for 20 years. Cheyenne has been in City Hall for 20 years, and I honestly, I can't remember a time not driving up here and seeing you. And the fact that you know pretty much every person's face that drives through that drive-thru is amazing to me, and that shows your dedication to the city, so thank you so much.
I want you to know, she's been telling everybody this is her 18th year, so she wouldn't have to come up here.
Yeah, she was trying to tell us all it wasn't, so.
Thank you.
All right, discuss removal of water tank on the Nor, on Nor Tigray.
We've been working on getting that tank removed. A few years ago, we had put it out, offered it just for scrap, got nobody to take on it, because we were going to require a million dollar insurance policy on that to take it down, so if there's any damage to adjoining homes or anything like that, that'll be covered. So Cheryl was working on a plan, had somebody we were supposed to meet out there, he didn't show up, didn't answer his phone call, so we're going to write up a spec and put it out in the newspaper, see if we can get somebody to take it down, because a lot of people susy our water system with that.
Yeah.
And it's not even hooked to it, and it's in poor shape, so we're going to be working on that, so just wanted to give you guys a heads up, the guy never showed.
Are we going to advertise that to take bids on it, and then accept the highest bid, and give them a timeline?
Yeah, I mean, basically, we'd like somebody to just take it down for the scraps, because there's a lot of good iron there, but, you know, we'll just get an opportunity to at least give us a bid on it.
Okay. All right. Discuss mode audit information, ADA work along Highway 160.
The gentleman contact, Angel and I have been talking to him, this is just in the beginning stages, they are going to, if you can understand the, Justin probably can better than I can, or Chris can, but they're going to do ADA work along 160, and this is just in the works. He is going to be sending us an agreement to sign whenever they get it ready, and we're, we already signed, and they are up for, we have to do an electronic signature of this, so, but he said it may be a little bit before they get it, but I want everybody to know that this is something that.
This is kind of a precursor to the center turn lane that we've had on, on their radar for several years, so they're going to upgrade approaches in different areas in the city to ADA standards, and so they just need to sign the agreement from the city saying that we're okay with it. I mean, we don't have to move any utilities, we're not out of any money.
That's what my concern was, okay.
Not at this time.
Okay.
Center turn lane goes through there, there's going to be some utility hurdles there.
We'll do the agreement, then I'll put it back on the roof.
Okay. All right, and ARPA funds discussion, lost revenue discussion.
The deadline is coming for the first annual report on the ARPA funds. We have to report to Treasury, submit our application papers that we've already submitted, and let them know that we've not spent any money, but that we have some projects planned. Part of that is deciding how to declare lost revenue. There are two methods. One is a very interesting math problem, which generates an answer that we do have lost revenue. The other is what the municipal league has likened to a standard deduction on your taxes. They will allow us to claim the entire amount as lost revenue as a standard deduction if we so choose. By doing that, we have less reporting requirements, but we always run the risk that they'll change their mind at some point and want to audit our projects for compliance with the remainder of the act. And so, the decision that has to be made is whether we want to use the standard deduction or do the calculation. In doing the calculation, we've got 22, 23, and 24 left to calculate. Given their math, I don't see there's any way that we won't show revenue loss. So to be on the safe side, I would like to calculate it.
Okay.
And then tailor our projects to the more, to the other areas that ARPA is permitting funding to go. For the public communication efforts, like NICSIL and the online code and the front desk software allowing the arms-length transactions, the tennis, in theory, you guys approve something, nothing is approved, but we've talked about the tennis court project, a possible water supply for the fire department up on Oremus, and that's pretty well going to, I would say, use all of our funds, but we haven't decided what projects. I would like to take the calculated revenue, lost revenue process, if that's agreeable with you.
I think I'd be more accurate, and, yeah.
The scary thing about this, we talked about our income situation for last year at our last meeting, we made more money in taxed income because people shop local. So we did not have an income loss, but now they've come up with this new math, someplace out of the sky, that they're going to allow us to take additional money for revenue loss, but like Angela said, in 2024, they may change their mind and say, uh, no, we're not going to let you do that, so we're going to take that back. If we take that revenue loss that they're offering to us by the calculation, my thought would be that we park it until close to the expiration date.
Yes.
And see if there's any negative comeback, but we have to spend it before that expiration date. So I would say let's wait, and what is the date in 2024?
The end of 2020, December 31st is the.
I would say we wait until like the third quarter before we actually, we can commit to this without spending it, if I'm correct?
Yes, we will have to report annually that we haven't spent any, and they will be asking beginning next year, why haven't you spent any of this?
Right. And I would like to get those numbers and then revisit this.
And they'll be finalizing their rule.
Oh, it's final-ish?
Yes, exactly, but they'll.
But the thing is, there's no, there's no websites you can go to and get a yes or no, there's no phone number, no 800 number for the government that you can go to and get a yes or no. They send you this, and you roll the dice and decide whether you want to take a chance or not. But I agree with Angela, we take, do the numbers and see what we come up with.
And I, I don't think we should, I don't think we should wait that long. So I think when she gets the numbers, I mean, we need to revisit this.
It's going to take you some time to finalize your projects and decide what you want to do.
Right.
But up to this point, for the two years that have been calculated, it's roughly $180,000 of loss. So moving forward, just kind of eyeballing the numbers, I think the calculation is a safe answer.
Okay. All right. All right, so we'll be looking at that and some information on that, but.
May I have a decision?
Uh-huh. May I have a decision? Yes, you can have a decision.
Thank you.
So we're going to allow Angela to do the calculations?
Make a motion, we do so.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, approve purchase additional front desk accounts.
We have been very successful with our front desk implementation. We purchased 350 accounts, they sell them in 50 gallon, 50, 50 person blocks, not 50 gallons.
Sorry.
And what this does is allow us to continue our auto pay program and allow customers to enroll in online bill pay and manage their own account, basically. If they want to be auto pay, if they want paperless bills, those sorts of things, it allows them to do that. Friday, we reached the 350th enrollee.
Wow.
So we probably need to buy another 50 seats.
Yeah.
And that cost is $300 a year, which will be prorated for what part of the year we've already passed up for 225 for this year.
Okay.
So we need a motion to approve purchase of another unit of $300?
Please.
So move.
Second?
Second, yes.
Okay, and all in favor? Justin, you have to, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, perfect. All right. All right, we got the second reading of Bill Number 542, metal detecting in Shadow Rock Park.
I move that we hear the second reading of Bill Number 542 by Shadow Rock.
I kind of want, I'd like to talk about some of the wording of this.
Sure.
As far as, the maximum area for any one excavation is eight inches square. So are you seriously talking this big?
Well, I'm talking about eight inches square.
Correct, so four inches by two inches?
No.
You want.
Eight inches by eight inches.
So 64 square inches then?
Yes, you are correct.
Well, eight by.
Eight by eight? Yeah, okay.
And these are.
But the wording is inches square, so he's correct.
So at first I was like, do you seriously want to do a two inch by four inch?
Yeah, that is, yep. That is a good catch.
These are the code of the metal detector club that they use nationwide. We just copied what they wrote down.
What they wrote in there?
Yeah.
What, no mathematicians in there?
I think it's not. So we need to make an adjustment in this?
Yes.
Eight inches by eight inches? Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Good call. We'll table that for next meeting?
Yes, that needs to be corrected.
Well, and then, I mean, there was some like, I know it was a copy and paste, would it be this 225.060 digging? Can we just repeal that completely and put all these rules under the special rules, which is 225.180? Because there is quite a bit of ordinances out there.
There you go.
So, and then.
So make that adjustment also?
Yeah, because, well, you've got some things in here, like be considerate of others, and I read through the ordinance book, that's pretty much covered under harassment.
Yeah.
Which is 205.030, and, I mean, disturbing the peace, which is already, is a 205.140, and, I mean, it says do not litter, that's technically already a law, you see the signs everywhere.
Right, it already is, yeah.
And do not tamper.
So it's redundant.
It's just redundant a lot, so do not tamper with, I mean, I call that vandalism, but when I read more, there's actually a tampering ordinance, which is 205.230. So are we getting a little wordy in the ordinance book, which my printer got away from me, and that's how big the book is with all the ordinances?
Yeah.
So trying to keep things simple to encourage people that want to do it, so it's not convoluted that they're like, I don't even want to do it because there's so many rules.
So I know what you're saying. If they're going to do that, if they're going to do metal detecting, I would rather they be able to look at one page and know yes is no, rather than go to this ordinance and this ordinance, even though it's redundant.
Even though it's redundant?
Yeah.
So if this is the one they're going to look at?
A lot of times that's what we do, because somebody's looking for something specific.
Yeah.
And, and then, you know, to refer them to one ordinance after another, so, yeah, so I can completely, yeah, that's, that's more or less the ease, the ease of it for the patrons, and then it is to look everything up, so, yet it is, I get, I completely agree, it is redundant, and so.
Because, I mean, every, like you at a camping site, it says leave no trace camping.
Yeah, exactly.
You can just say leave no trace metal detecting, which, you know, fill all excavations or replace dirt and leave no trace digging. Yeah.
So, I mean, otherwise, we would, yeah, we would be reverting to, yeah, every, so it, basically, I, I think it should be left basically the way it is because of the ease of, you know, the people that are going to take it and look at it and stuff, but, you know, any wording can always be changed, so, too, so.
Well, I agree with the part about changing it to eight inches by eight inches.
Oh, yeah, definitely, because that makes no sense.
But the rest of it, I think we should make it simple for the metal detecting people to say, I want a copy of that, so I know what I'm doing.
Yeah.
And are we going to ask, would we, would we keep this with whoever's in charge of the park, or the camp host down there, kind of? Would they just have, hey, if you're going to be metal detecting, here are the rules if we had that readily available?
Not really, we've got a camping.
I think we should, I think that's a good idea, because that's where they're going to be.
Oh, just posted on the sign?
No, just have it available to the, the camp, the management down there, the camp, host, hang, I could not think of the word, yeah, down there, so, because they would be the ones probably being asked, if anything, they're the ones that are going to be seen, and so, anyway, that's a good idea. Let's table that until. Okay, approve Blue Valley Public Safety Agreement, the storm siren. Nathan?
No. Well, this is the annual agreement for the maintenance for the outdoor storm sirens. We cover five currently that may be recovered, so there's not much changes as far as cost on it, it is budgeted, I don't need to mention any, so.
Yeah. All right.
I move that we approve the Blue Valley Public Safety Agreement.
Okay.
I second it.
All in favor? Justin?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Volunteer fire supplemental insurance?
This is the supplemental fire insurance we provide to the volunteers. There basically is a $3 change from last year. It's an expanded accidental death and dismemberment, as well as some accident insurance.
Okay.
Is it kind, just basically kind of like Aflac then, ish?
It's a little more than Aflac. It provides a decent level of life insurance benefit if that were.
Okay, if it's better than Aflac, that's a good thing.
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve the volunteer fire supplemental insurance, $1926.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, approve purchase agreement with Missouri Fire Apparatus, purchase tanker.
So the county should have a contract with Missouri Fire Apparatus. Last meeting, purpose was to reach out to find a tanker, spend $110,000, and that was wildly difficult to view. The specs are provided as a 96, I call it a barn find, literally, but it's been, it was put on the back burner, it was going to be refurbished and stuff, so they started the process, and so that's what they're going to be finishing within the next 90 days, to finish refurbishing it, putting the tank back in, and, you know, with prefab work and stuff, so it is a nice truck. If you have pictures of both, if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, really, would like to see it.
It's a nice find. This is in the budget for buyer question?
It is, it was a part of the fire tax that was funded. I've researched and searched and searched, trying to find tankers right now, and trucks in general is, I don't want to haze that. There's a lot of departments that held off trying to, or they purchased vehicles but couldn't get delivered because of chips and stuff like that through COVID, and so they haven't been able to sell the used apparatus, and so a lot of it's been, been hard to find, so.
Yeah.
And finding one that fits within our station, because of lengthwise and heightwise, and finding one that we're trying to find from the spec that we're looking for.
I move that we approve the purchase agreement with them, Missouri Fire.
I move that we approve the purchase agreement with them, Missouri Fire Apparatus, for the purchase of the tanker.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, perfect. Okay, then we have approved the purchase of additional equipment for the tanker.
All the toys.
Cool. I call them toys, not toys. So you do have a rough estimate as far as what I've put together on estimated costs on it. At this point, our ballpark, I have reached out and requested quotes from our vendors. That's, again, a little bit of a nightmare within the vendors and shipping and stuff, but I've got a couple of them back. The budget numbers that are, or the numbers that are on there are within the budget as far as what the quotes have been coming in at. I've got another quote coming in tomorrow. The funding is provided by the remaining costs of, between the tanker budget and what's already in my equipment, the budget that was already allotted, so it's not an additional number.
Okay.
So that $35,000 is the estimated total?
Estimated cost total. I'm hoping it's under that, but, again, the shipping and some of that is kind of a little, little crazy kind of finding.
So if we approved the $35,000, and you come in with a higher number?
How did you find it was $35,000?
We budgeted $130,000 for the tanker.
Yeah, we did, and that's why, and you guys had told him, try to keep the tanker at a lower, at a certain amount, in order to put the, the tools on it.
Nathan and I talked about it, and I think he intends to put this as sale, fire tax expenditure.
I've got $38,000, $35,000 in equipment costs under my budget already for equipment, and so we're using part of that and the remaining part of the $20,000 made from the tanker costs, and so.
If, if we approved up to $40,000, you think that would definitely cover it, so you don't have to come back next month, get approval for going over?
I'd be one.
Okay.
I would make that motion to approve up to $40,000 for fire equipment.
Okay.
I would second that motion.
Okay. Dustin?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Okay. So up to $40,000, Nathan?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Discussed replacement of merry-go-round at Shadow Rock Park.
Yeah, we've had in the budget for the last three years, money for, to replace the merry-go-round.
Keeps going underwater.
Going underwater, so, we, we've got a bid that's somewhere, it's right in the neighborhood, $11,000, but I will need to approve up to $12,000, make sure that we cover shipping and all of that, and that will replace the large one and the small. And we're going to make them removable, so we can pull them out with a backup.
Pull them out, so, okay.
Do we have that bid?
I've got it in an email. I don't, I don't have it with me. Pull it up and give you the exact figure, but. I'll get that for you later. It's a miracle, a playground equipment that we have to count with.
Well, I would recommend we approve it subject to copy of the bid.
Well, as long, I, I don't want to spend over $12,000, so.
It won't be.
Okay. So you can approve it to not go over that.
But I think we need to see the bid.
I, I, we definitely need to see the bid, yeah.
She's going to go get it. That would be a lot of fun to see the bid.
Okay. We can move on and come back to that. Okay? All right. Approved to use police department donation money for equipment set up for new Ford Explorer, $236.15.
We had some donated money, which tried to, uh, the police department, bugger on a new Ford Explorer that they discovered.
And where did the donated money come from?
Citizens.
Citizens, okay.
They gave it for this purpose. They gave it for this purpose?
They give it, they give it to this.
They get donated money periodically, yeah.
A donation. They did use what we needed, and we're trying to stay within, within budget, get some extra stuff on that, so we can try to use that, that money to put the stripes on it.
I move that we use the $236.15 for donated money towards cleaning, striking, I move, please. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Perfect. Okay. Approved purchase of decal for the booth for the chamber event. She didn't have it here. Ms. Hesketh has been looking into getting a decal for Shop Local for the spring fling event. We have a tent set up, Nathan will be manning it, and she wanted to also, she wanted to let people see that Shopping Local did help our tax, our income, and so that, maybe to continue and to encourage Shopping Local, and she's going to have some decals she wants to hand out at that event, and, okay, that's the miracle. Okay. And so.
So this is going to be spent away.
Angela, do you have a price on that? You sent it to me, and, oh, she sent it to me in an email, and.
The invoice I got was for $237.50.
Yeah. And that was for $250, and so, anyway, it was, I think, $400 and something for $500, but I don't, I think we should start with the $250 to hand out and encourage.
So these are little decals?
They are, just like what you've got out there on that big sign and stuff, or banner that's out front there, it's just a, and, she talked about doing bumper stickers too. I told her, you know, people try to steer away from bumper stickers nowadays, they don't stick things on there. This is a decal that actually comes off, so, yes.
If I might, if she brings up the artwork, Holly and I will donate them.
Oh, no.
We waste that much. Yeah, we waste that much material every day.
Are you kidding?
Yeah. Bring it over. I'll see what we can do.
Okay.
Be happy to do it.
Oh, thank you.
You guys are always a godsend to us. Thank you. So let's, uh.
Is this the merry-go-round?
Yeah.
Okay.
Obviously, we don't need to approve it, so to purchase it since it's being donated. All right, so we're going back to the merry-go-round, number 11, or 14, excuse me.
And so, Chris, this will be removable, so when we know the foot?
We're going to make it that way, make it where a shaft will set it a bearing, so we can be lifted out each time.
Okay. Awesome.
The problem with putting anything new there is that, obviously, it gets ruined, and, and so, you know, some of the stuff that's older is, was built pretty well, but it's even taken a toll.
It's showing itself.
Yes, it is, and so, in, in, in order to put anything back there or replace anything there, it needs to be removable, so.
And since it's removable, I move that we do approve the purchase of the two merry-go-rouns for, in Shadow Park.
And you're going to be able to remove the merry-go-round and the assembly that they sit in?
Up to an amount of?
Uh.
$12,000?
$12,000, no.
Okay.
Well, no, the, the assembly will be blocked in the ground, and the shaft will sit down in that assembly.
Are they going to, for the, so the shaft's going to sit inside the bearing, are they going to give you a plug for that?
I was going to say, are there a plug?
Yeah, well, we don't know, we just have to build it.
You're going to make it a plug?
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
I think the bearings, from what I'm understanding, is they come out with the miracle system. You're saying you're just going to have a mounting system, like a concrete system that it sets in?
Right.
That's what comes in.
But it still needs a plug, because sediment will get into it.
Sure.
Yeah. Someone's going to be there to do the, do the, now.
I would second your motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Monthly ordinance review is another thing that Ms. Hesketh would like to add, and it's kind of, goes to, back to what we've started, we kind of started doing, we just didn't really name it anything. Some of the ordinances, like the camping one, was done in 1972, and things have changed a little bit, and some of these other ordinances are somewhat of the same, they're, they're outdated, and she would like to, and I think it's a really good idea, is to go through one, at least one, every month, to see what changes need to be made, and, you know, some of the wording is outdated.
Well, there, there's one that I read in there, that there's no playing ball in the street.
Yeah.
So it doesn't say what kind of ball it is.
Right, right.
It's written in 1984, so. There don't have any updated changes or what, but.
Yeah, and so as we found them, we, we made changes, but I think it's a good idea to put one as a monthly review, at least one every month, and then, it has to be voted on twice, so that's going to get, have us reviewing one and voting on one every month, and so.
Per the ordinance book, it says we can do it all in the same meeting.
You can. We usually try to give our citizens, you know, if there's something that's controversial, we usually try to give them at least, we do it in two months, so somebody can say, you know, have, give them say, and, and it, now, if it's something that is just.
Like playing ball in the street?
Yes. Then we can do it all in one, so, okay? All right. That was just me explaining basically that, and I think next month she'll have something, or, actually, any of you can get together, you know, get, and just find one that needs to be addressed.
So will we be told in advance which one?
You will, and the person that's going to pick it out will make adjustments, and then you can make your adjustments, too. And in that adjustment, then the next month we will vote on it, once the adjustments have been made.
So like, if it's ordinances dealing with fire and stuff, I could sit down and make that in the.
You can.
Go through it.
Exactly. To make sure that all wording is done, you know, and, and I would encourage you too, with the police department, anything that's there, you know, sit down with David, he's such a tough guy.
He's the expert.
Yeah. Anyway, but, uh.
I'm going to give him a big, yeah.
So, anyway, and just sit down with him and go, go through it and make, make adjustments, and then that will be sent in packets to everybody, so, okay? All right. Minutes of the March 21st meeting?
I move that we approve the minutes of the March 21st meeting. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Bills for approval. We have bills for 32422 that were $142,262. 33122, the amount of $3,006.10. April 7th, 2022, $52,540.46. April 14th, 2022, $20,360.58.
I move the approval on those bills.
Is this from like your QuickBooks thing?
This, this is just a spreadsheet that the board asked me to do several years ago.
Okay.
And then there is a report that prints out from the accounting software as I'm doing the checks that balances to this report.
Okay. Just look at that first page, it says MediaCon on there. Is that our phone service and everything here?
We have two separate bills, three separate places. We have cable service for weather monitoring at the city shop, the city hall internet and phone service is all on, larger bill, and then there is service that.
And is it, is it monthly? I'm just trying to, just going through this.
Yes.
Roughly that much a month and everything, okay?
Yes.
And then, I guess I had a question, like O'Reilly's, are those purchase orders, or are they for a particular vehicle, or, because it just said automotive parts and accessories?
On the purchase card bill?
Yeah.
That's what I paid for the entire statement for that month.
Okay, and with, and they're all separate transactions, or all one transaction?
Uh, these are all separate transactions.
Okay.
She says.
And then?
No, this is the monthly bill split by department.
Okay. I, I was just going through, highlighting some things that just stood out, like equipment rental.
And you're welcome to come in anytime, and, and if you have, when you see these, have questions on them, and she, you have her explaining to you.
Okay. I can do that.
She's really good at it. Because I do.
Is this typical, because I, I'm sorry, you must have went to training somewhere? Yep. See, I can take that.
When I'm signing a check for one of these, and I see, I see the receipt and stuff, I still need to know sometimes what, why.
Exactly. That's all I was asking.
And so, and I, I ask her, you know, and, and so she's, she'll tell you everything.
Okay.
Did we have my license?
No, not yet.
We got a motion, we saw it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yes, there's a motion.
Motion, okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Financial statement says of March 31st, 2022.
Okay, and this is what you'll see on a monthly basis, is your bank balances. On the back of that sheet is a quarterly basis, and it will show where you stand with the minimum operating reserve that is required in both the general, general fund balance and the proprietary fund, which is your water sewer. A little further back, you'll find the revenue and expense report, which is basically a P and L, where we are this month, where we are this year, what the budget is, and what is left to spend or receive. We just amended that, I think, in February, so we should be in pretty close compliance with, with budget. And then you will have your transaction registers, which are the actual checkbook registers, basically, of the five checking accounts, and. And that's it for the financials, as far as what's in them. One thing I will tell you is that the president of the board is a bank signatory, so we will be signing signature cards at brands like us.
Yeah.
In case the mayor cannot attend to sign a check, we might have to call you.
Did I not mention that to you?
You did not mention that.
My mistake.
I know you wanted to give up that big job.
Okay, so.
Do we really lose 2.2 million gallons of water a month?
Not generally. We're having some, you moved on to the next report.
So we still in Swan Valley? Quick math, that's like $37,000.
We're replacing, we're doing meter, citywide meter replacement with automatic grid meters to help with that, that's not just, just water leaks.
Okay, because I'm like, where are we leaking 2 million gallons of water?
A typical, a typical cities is 20, 25%, but we, we've found some leaks and repaired those. We've had water technologies in, looking for leaks in Swan Valley, they've, they've told me that there's springs. I've talked to people that's lived in the area, you know, their entire life, and they say the springs have been there since before Swan Valley was there, so, we're always chasing leaks, but I think the, when we get 100% switch out on the meters, the automatic meters are a lot more efficient than the old meters we're taking out of the ground, so.
And those automatic meters, you started with the Shadow Rock area, the older part of town, with those automatics?
Yeah, we tried to start, start in the areas that had the older, older meters. We're probably two-thirds installed, so we're hoping that, that will go down.
All right, do I have a motion on financial statements?
Motion to approve financial statement for 33122.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approved transfers from March 24th, 2022 through April 14th, 2022.
Dustin, these transfers are things that are routine. Rather than run three separate payroll systems, we run one. The water sewer and the recreation reimbursement general fund for the money that is apportioned to those departments. So the top half of this report is basically the water and the recreation reimbursement to general. And then any other transactions that need to be done at the bank are listed here, matched up to the bank accounts. That way you all know where money goes when.
And Cheyenne will be gone next week. She's on vacation next week. And so Angela's going to be super busy next week. But I suggest maybe, you know, anytime that you want to come in and visit with Angela to get some explanations on some of these things, it certainly helps, believe me, it does.
Yes, it does.
Motion to approve transfers from March 24th through April 14th, 2022.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Confirm monthly audit reporting sheet was received and reviewed. It's one we have to do every month.
I move that we, is it approved or?
This is from the auditor's suggestion that we have to do this.
That we accept the auditing, audit recording sheet for the government for this one. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Angela, I do like the fact that you've got it down to two pages.
I'm trying. This system is all about more paper. So anytime we can cut it, it's good.
All right, and we're down to your public comments section. One of the things that, I would like to know more about you.
Okay, I'm one of the dispatchers at Table Rock, so I keep your lights on. So I control the seven dams really in this area and they're remotely more in. So between Beaver, Table Rock, Bull Shoals, Chris Ferry, Norfolk, and then two on the Arkansas River, Gartnell and Ozard. So those are different ones, so I keep your lights on.
Can you keep from flooding our park this year?
For what? The 1938 Flood Control Act. So if I could control Mother Nature?
Yeah, no kidding.
I would.
What about your family?
I have a wife and she had two kids before we got married. And I've got a 12-year-old in seventh grade. They're actually at her softball game right now, so.
Oh, my goodness.
So she likes softball.
Awesome, awesome. Well, it's good to have you. Thank you. Anybody else have any comments?
Yep. So my name's Ken Ava, so I've been living here in America for six years. Became a citizen last year. I noticed there's a cinema, like on Main Street. And I've got three boys that spent teenage years here. And I was really keen to kind of get something happening for the kids. I've made a lot of friends with the police, like I came out of law of regulation and compliance in Australia. And so all my friends when I first came here were the police. And so when I first came here, Dave was very good to me and a lot of the other officers. I had no friends, so I spent a lot of time doing ride-ongs. And so most of my first three years, he was doing ride-ongs with the police. One of the things that really worried me was how many kids just have nothing to do.
We are well aware.
And so I was thinking you've got a perfectly good, well, it's not perfectly good, but you've got a cinema there. And my job, I'm a captain of business jets, a number of business jets in Springfield. And all my clients are ridiculously wealthy, and that's how I'm employed. And they're always saying to me, if I ever see things that they can invest in locally, let them know. And I would love to get that cinema up and running and get something happening for these kids to kind of actually happen. So they're not driving through the S-curves at nine o'clock at night to go watch a movie. They can actually come here and watch something. I'm a born and a Christian as well, so I'd like to have some clean being played, some of the filthy junk that's getting played these days. Just a clean movie theater, people can go in there and watch a good clean movie during the day. We can have stage productions going, you know, places for kids to learn how to act and sing, et cetera. We've got an awesome town here and I just see this thing sitting there doing nothing. And I've got the ability to find the resources to make something happen. So I'd like to find out what I can do to try, I'd like to invest. I mean, you guys have been so good to me, especially the police have been phenomenal to me, accepting me into this country, into this culture. And to me, it's kind of like me saying thank you for what you guys have done to me. I'd like to know what I can do to get the board on to make something happen so it's not sitting there doing nothing.
The Panay still looks at it.
The Panay still own the building and they've been approached several times to buy it. And they won't sell it.
Well, I think if they still own it and we simply do the work, get something happening in it.
That's been offered too. I mean, they simply have it just stuffed full of storage right now. And the family just won't think about selling it.
I am a very good talker. I would love to be.
I can whip you up.
If you could arrange for me to just meet with them.
Chris, if you want to take care of that.
I'll take them out to dinner, do whatever, just get to know them, share my heart with them.
I would love to see it myself. Ava, the city of Ava has turned an old theater into, they show older movies, John Wayne movies, things like that, Sunday matinees. And we've approached them several times over the years and never gotten anywhere. Several business owners have went and tried to purchase.
I can talk 95-year-old women getting into a high-speed, high-altitude jet, so I'm pretty.
Would you give your name to him and your phone number when, after the meeting?
Otherwise, if he had a camera, we'll all have your number.
I know.
Anyone else have any comments?
Is there any other?
Those patients.
Let's say they just were an absolute no at selling that or doing anything with that. Is there any other building in town that caught your eye that you could do something with? Because I know everybody talks about the Shadow Rock Motel.
Yeah, that's another place.
If they, if, do you know who owns that? Because if they would sell that and your investors wanted to invest in that, and I'm sure we could look at some kind of, I'm sure there's history there, look for like a historical grant to help with some of that and.
Yeah.
Or if your investors wanted to put the entire bill, that'd be pretty cool too.
I'd rather just put the entire bill because it solves a lot of problems.
That would be.
And when you start farting around with all sorts of, you know, meeting everybody's criteria, it's never-ending. Whereas if you can just like straight from this, just take the whole lot.
What your investors want is what they want.
Yeah.
I think that would be a neat building if it was transformed. Everybody talks about it.
Let's be frank, I mean, let's be really frank here. The demographic here is getting older and older and older. We need something to attract people to stay here. It's an awesome place. But, you know, another 10, 15 years is going to rock my beach.
Correct.
You know, we need to fix that. We need to fix it now.
It's actually for sale, the building is.
It's always for sale.
With the cinema, it's ready to go.
And we were looking into the part that's around the fence. DNR has approached us with the brownstone grants for blighted buildings. And so looking into doing that, it's just tough when they won't give up their property and you can't go in there as a Gestapo and just take their property, blighted property, tear it down. So there's a fine line. So we're working with the DNR and seeing if we can, we approached the owner and asked them if they would deed that property over to the city. We could fundraise, we could do, we could get grants or whatever to tear it down and then just make it a green space. But we're not willing to do that. So the hands are kind of tied. But if somebody bought it that had that in mind, had that kind of mindset, we'd be glad to help them with it.
Awesome.
We've had half it is in different contract for deed owners in there. And when they got to the asbestos, they walked out.
Yeah.
So that's going to be an issue that will have to be addressed with the Shadow Rock property.
Yeah, like for me, like when I first looked at that, like a bulldozer will take care of a lot of things and then you just put a whole new structure on it.
Well, you can't bulldoze asbestos. You have to remove it.
I agree, but the person who would be investing knows how to handle that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'd be great. We used that theater, the one you're talking about, probably 25 years ago, we had a koans club and we talked them into running films over a weekend. And their equipment is from the 40s. And the gentleman that owns it is the only one probably living that still knows how to use it.
Yeah.
So all of that's got to come out and all that's got to be replaced with modern equipment.
Yeah, I'm up for it. I'm absolutely up for it.
Well, that'd be a great asset for the town.
But I want to do something for like, I mean, you guys have been so good to me and making me feel at home. I'd really like to do something to kind of pay it back. And that, to me, is a really way that would really keep young people off the roads at night. Something for them fun to do, you know, we could theme it out, like 1950s theater theme, you know. Be so much fun, you know, it'd really highlight the place, so.
That'd be great.
Blood and Jackets, that'd be cool.
Yeah. I think that's awesome. You had a question?
Do we inform the students at the school about the junior firefighting?
That would be a question for Nick.
What's that?
Do we inform the students of the junior firefighting at the school?
So our junior program, yeah, so during career day and stuff, we go up there and present that to them and any opportunity we could. Obviously, this last year, this year is the first year we've been able to get back through into the schools and stuff because COVID unfortunately, but so we're pushing that hard. Because we had up to almost 20 junior firefighters at one point.
I think that's true.
And if you've never seen it, the school has a career day that is just amazing. And a whole lot of different kinds of employers are in there also at that time train, you know, showing them what's available to them at, you know, at that age, so. Anybody else have any questions?
Chris, do you want to share what's been done up at Shoals Bend?
Yeah, we, since our park does flood, we've had a lot of civic organizations that had different events at the park. And that affects, the flooding affects those events. So the board decided we'd put in some infrastructure so we could have water sewer, electric hookups for vendor wagons, cook wagons, have barbecues, things like that up there when Shadow Rock Park's flooded. We're also getting a, getting ready to hook up a water fountain. We'd like to put security cameras up there because we're getting a lot of vandalism already. And so working with the internet company Whisper to put internet up there. And then we'll put up probably six camera security systems so we can see what's going on there. They've already tried to pry the doors open. And they've, we had a deer camera up there and they beat it down with a rock and stole the SD card. So, but right now we've got everything in place, all the pedestals, electrical, everything is in. We've got lights and electrical at the new pavilion next to the new playground. And we should be finished with that project in probably a month.
And if you haven't been up there and seen that pavilion, it is amazing. That floor is just.
And we've also planted several trees up there and then trees in the park. 20 trees up there, I think 10 in Shadow Rock Park. And the trees are the only trees that will live underwater. They are boll cyclas, so we did choose wisely. So I didn't, I didn't want to see the last big tree cut down in Shadow Rock Park.
And all the trees are gone.
We've planted over 100 trees in Shadow Rock Park over the years.
The new ones are doing well this springtime and showing growth.
Everything's, yeah, they're starting to green up. So far, so good. They're warranted through their first leaf, so if they don't, then they'll want to.
Is there another internet provider up there, possibly?
Hmm, not that I know of, not that I know of. There's somebody on that tower, there's fiber on the tower.
Because Whisper's changed hands like.
Yeah.
Six times in two years. And they're super, they were super unreliable that since I work for the DOD, I can get the first responder internet. And we just went with that because we never had internet in our house. So, because Whisper was down for a week minimum every month. You know, when lightning comes through, there's time to go down for two weeks. And you have a 12-year-old that used to do homework, she freaks out if there's no Wi-Fi.
They were very unreliable at first. I don't know about now that Whisper's trying to take care of those.
They're trying, they are trying to fix everything.
They're trying to fix everything, so I don't really know what our option would be, other option would be there. But we need to have, we need to have a security camera up there with a loop. And so we can try to curtail, we don't want to spend $100,000 up there and just watch them destroy it. And it's going to happen if it happens anywhere. So we just want to make sure, put cameras up and put signs up that say, "We are watching you." And try to, you know, kids are going to be kids, but we can do what we can do.
And I heard that Jellystone sold to New.
Yeah, Jellystone sold and then people that bought Jellystone bought that five or six acre river right up there.
Right, they're going to expand.
So I don't know what they're going to do with that.
They're going to expand the camp then.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that house on the corner, they're actually, they bought that and they're renting that out per night, so.
Yeah, so that's all good. It's all breaking more in, so, yep.
Yeah, if the water district can meet their water needs.
Yeah.
That's what they're dealing with right now. I think they've got that taken care of.
We might add, the property up there, the city owns all the property, but we have leased the back half of that property for the Tany County Fair because they got flooded out of the park also. We maintain the park up there, I think, sectionally, it's really good condition. But if you look at the property back behind where we have leased it to the Fair Board, it's not pretty. It's not anything we've got control of. But it is back behind all that, back behind the ball field and everything.
It's a dumping ground?
Yeah, there's not much we can do with it. We've leased it to them and there wasn't anything in the lease about the condition of the property. They have demolition derbies up there and they tried to have rodeos up there. Got the metals and the glass left over from the demolition derby stopped the rodeo because they can't get it all out of the dirt. So if you can keep our park out of the water, we can have a rodeo down there this year.
That's all on you? How long is that lease with the Fair Board?
30 years.
There's no way to.
We can violate their stipulations, they have to meet certain codes, but, you know. We're just trying to be naveling, but the dumping going on is they're creating more parking lots. So it's not, they're not dumping mattresses and beds and things like that. They're dumping clean fills and, you know, asphalt middings, things like, so they can not park on the city's property, which is the nice green area at Ball Field, they're trying to create a parking lot for. Last year they didn't have a fair, but this year I believe they are. They've got one advertised. They, it hasn't done well financially since they moved it out of the park. Because you know as well as I do, if you have a carload full of kids and you drive by it down in the park, you're going to go to the fair. Up there, it's out of sight, out of mind. And a lot of old timers said, "I'm not going to it up there." So I personally would like to see it back in our park, but we realize that, you know, that they have to do what they have to do. The demolition derby is their biggest draw, it's their biggest day on Saturday. So we've entered in an agreement with the Tany County Riding Club to not let them have demolition derbies inside that. So that kind of hurts. The, I don't know if the riding club is still an organization.
I think I saw them set up in Shadow Rock.
They, that was not the riding club, that was just a group of guys that got together, equestrian, things like that.
So that's where it's nice to keep it clean, for these groups like that.
Just a hand back there.
Is the leased land to the Fair Board, is it in city limits?
Yes.
So are there not ordinances that will make them clean up the trash?
No. They do what they have to do to have a fair there. And like Chris said, they have borrowed green space from us for their parking. And we've allowed them to do it, but we don't want them to continue doing that. So they're trying to fill in and create some more parking place and that's why.
Well, we planted trees and everything, so we're trying to.
Well, we want to put another backstop back there on the back end of our green for the little kids, just a backstop and bases and not all of the lights and bleachers. And because you get more than one team wanting to play ball. Now, we don't want to chase off the Fair Board completely. They do bring people to town.
Well, that demolition derby is usually a packed house, so.
People like cats.
All right, well, we are going to postpone our closed meeting until next month when Ms. Haskett is here. And so we'll just be closing out this meeting this evening.
I move that we adjourn.
All in favor?
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, everybody.